Oh.
Uh oh. You're live.
I'm okay with it.
I'm too.
I'm gonna go give this Nixon a call real quick.
There you go.
She might be dealing with her boat.
Trailer.
Well, her boat was.
Well, it's a trailer.
Stuck some. She needs a trailer, but.
I told her where to get one, or John. Where you can get one. Up to them.
Can you make it to garden club on Monday?
I think so.
Good, alright.
Five hundred pounds of dollars.
It's at seven at the flower garden?
Yeah, but the governor just came out.
Don't know exactly what time. I'll look it up. Six or.
The one by the first office.
Yeah.
I did, but was it today?
Another one of our release.
Working meeting.
It was today, I think.
Oh.
There was another one.
Yeah, if you feel like gardening.
Up the funds for parks and stuff.
Yes.
Like we have a big chance at much.
Do you need irises?
You might have a chance.
No.
No.
Yeah, no.
Make sure the state and the county parks and all that stuff.
Yeah. Lansing.
The big ones.
I've been dividing my irises.
Yeah, I do.
I mean, I can.
You said that you had it right. Little people. You do not have the vote to.
Didn't say insignificant, just a little people.
Six thirty.
A lot of.
Six thirty, okay. Probably twenty-five or thirty different colors.
Really?
Yeah.
I have purple, so.
I have, well, I have multiple shades of purple and yellow and.
We're gonna go here pretty quick.
I'll tag you in a thing on Facebook. I have the colors. I have an album with the colors.
Hopefully, we have a small agenda tonight, so we can get through this.
Hopefully, he doesn't know.
Fifteen knots.
This thing's indicated that she will be here momentarily.
Okay. Do we hit, do we have a, do we wanna take like ti- like bets on? Person has to bring a snack to the next meeting.
Well, she's got.
Closest.
Well, unfortunately, the next meeting is gonna be catered, so.
Okay, for the meeting after that. Do we wanna take that?
First time we're gonna be done.
Catered meeting and.
Well, we can do that in the one that.
Special, don't they?
Special.
It's not.
The one that picks the closest time.
Firehouse or the old.
Is the winner to bring the meal?
That'd be the new one. The old one's got.
Alright.
No flaws.
Winner.
Alright, okay, what time we done tonight? About Miss Paul.
What? What time do you think we're gonna be done tonight?
Eight thirty.
Lisa.
Realistic way.
Eight twenty-two.
You're on record, so Miss Conley.
Um, I'm gonna say eight thirty-five.
I'm saying, uh, nine.
I was gonna say eight forty-five.
I'm not a gambling man, but I'll say it's when the mallet hits the pad.
The meetings.
A journey.
Called to order. The regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council for July eighth of twenty-twenty-one. If you would all please rise and recite the pledge with me at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Have a roll call. Excuse me. Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Um, Mrs. Nixon. We'll be showing up shortly, I hope. Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
Present.
Mr. Ross here. We will, uh, Mrs. Nixon, hopefully she's on her way. Moving on to item three, public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment of the public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council's policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought to the, before the city council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. After communication with a city manager, no resolution is reached, the concerns will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the city councils for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. At this time, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak?
My name is Sherry Drake. I'm at four-six-seven South Seventh Street. Um, I wanted to address everybody for a reconsideration of a chicken policy. Um, I wanna be able to have chickens on my property. I have an acre of land. I feel I have more than enough room. I know some concerns people may have is roosters are loud. Um, I'm not inquiring to have roosters. I would just like to have chickens so that I can produce eggs for myself and my family and my neighbors. I'm not doing it to make money off it. I just, I like animals. And I would like to have chickens to have fresh eggs and share that with my neighbors as well.
That won't sum it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Um, go ahead. Make a brief.
Um, well, there's only a couple of us, I think, on the council from when this came up the last time, and it was actually like, I think, a four to three vote. But one of the questions had to do with how many chickens. What would you think would be?
Appropriate.
An appropriate number.
Probably four, four to six. Um, yeah, we're not talking about like covering the whole yard with them. Just a, just a small coop, you know, like a small coop, you would buy it, worm and flea.
Okay.
And just a few chickens, just, uh, just a few eggs for the family and, uh, you know.
Understand.
Yeah, I just, if we're gonna revisit the policy, I'd like to know what people. I mean, and not even just what you want, but like, what do you think is a good number?
I think four to six is good, just because they might not all necessarily produce eggs all the time, so.
Yeah, they don't.
Four to six, you can kinda have a good steady pool of eggs, I guess.
Okay, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We'll take that into account. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to address the council?
Um, Ms. Diamond, uh, would you like to make a public comment at this time?
Isn't, aren't they on the agenda?
Uh, hi, Mike. No, not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then to item A, public hearing, which we have none.
None that I'm aware of.
And moving on to item five, adoption of the agenda. As written, or do we have any modifications or changes?
Uh, I think we're gonna propose in addition to your fee schedule, but I think we'll do it.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I believe for adopting the agenda, not the consent agenda.
Adopting agenda, correct. Thank you for correction. Hearing none, a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
It's all votes yes. Consent agenda approved.
Option.
Or adoption of the agenda. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Any changes or modifications?
Anybody one?
Or explanations?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? Hearing none, I have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. This, Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
It's all votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item seven, action items. Mr. Omax.
So, as I indicated previously, um, there is an ordinance under consideration for first reading tonight, which would be the soil erosion and sedimentation control ordinance, which would authorize the city council to pass a resolution, uh, which would require a security deposit and or escrow for the development of certain site plans and projects, um, with the idea that it would stop, uh, putting soil and dirt and rocks into the city's roads. So, if we're going to adopt a security deposit slash escrow for that ordinance, uh, we would wanna add it to the the fee schedule for the year. So, I know it's a lot of extra work for the clerk to have to do this multiple times throughout the year, so I'd like to do it sooner than later. Um, so we'll probably put it on your agenda for the next meeting, if that's something we wanna move forward on. But other than that, I think all the changes in here are reasonable from last year.
So, is what you're saying, uh, in item B and discussion, that's what you're assuming too? For soil erosion and sediment control?
Correct.
That would be a first reading?
It is, and I, I guess I'd like to hear whether the council is in, interested in passing it at all at this point. But as far as the fee schedule's concerned, I don't wanna wait another month for these, um, fees to take effect. So, I'd ask that you approve of the resolution tonight, and then we'll come back with a modified resolution next month.
Well, yeah.
I wanna make sure I've got it correct, and you're looking at from discussion B, moving it up to coincide with action items? A?
No.
No, sorry, uh, let me clarify. So, I'm only asking that you approve of seven A today.
Okay.
Later on, during discussion of eight D, that will educate me as to whether council wants to move forward with it. If council says that they do wanna move forward with it, then at your next meeting, we'll have a modified fee schedule. Okay?
Okay.
I guess because of the reading of it, I have no problem with it, and I wouldn't have any problem with moving it up.
Neither would I, so. Unfortunately, we do have to read ordinances twice.
I was gonna say, I think that has to be read twice.
Oh, okay, well, we'll move along. Will the council?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen, a resolution to revise the twenty-twenty-one fees and charges for municipal services.
Second.
With the record knowing that Ms. Nixon is present at seven oh eight, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt action item A, any discussion? Hearing none. Have a roll call vote. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
It's all votes yes. Any action items we brought before the council at this time?
Other than I'm aware of.
Moving on into eight for discussion items. Number eight, A, Mr. Omax.
So, I know we're all sick and tired of this. Hoping, hoping to put it to bed here sooner than later. Um, you know, the city, I think, took a fairly liberal approach, and I think it's worked out to our benefit. Um, we've had a lot of old buildings and properties that we never thought would get redeveloped, get redeveloped. We're getting lots of investment in the community. Uh, but as anyone who pays attention to the planning commission, uh, it takes up an absolute ton of our time. Um, and I think there is a point of diminishing returns, and I think we've probably met that point. Um, I think the council's moratorium was reasonable four or five months ago. Um, and so I guess the question for you guys as a policy is, do we want to extend that moratorium? Do we want to allow the moratorium to expire, which would have the effect of allowing an infinite number of marijuana businesses? Uh, or do we want to explore imposing a cap on the licenses? Uh, currently, there's no cap on any of the licenses. Um, and maybe it's time we say, you know what? It's ju- it's just too much. So, I'm just looking for some direction from the council.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a shuffle?
I, yeah, I'll take it in a minute. You know, I sat on the planning commission in, in, in undoubtedly every site plan we get, we put a maximum, I believe, of four hours on it. And not to mention what the manager and the staff are putting on it. It just continually. Uh, we, we have tabled three items of ordinance changes the last four months because the meetings go till nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock. And, you know, my opinion on this is, I think we need to cap them while we have. You know, it's, it's, it can be changed at a later date if we so desire, but that's my opinion. Having to do a stopful, uh, Mrs. Powell?
Can I ask a couple of questions first?
Sure.
Sure. Um, the processor licenses, those can only go out at HC, right?
Yes.
I believe they could also go in the industrial section.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you have a processor license, then you can also have a retailer license?
So, in the HC district, you have to co-locate all retailers.
Okay.
And one of the ways you can co-locate is with a processor.
Okay.
Um, that seems to be the preferred way to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming that processing is cheaper than growing, makes up less space than growing.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the way they've been doing it out of the HC district.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you could set up just an independent processor in industrial section of town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I don't think that makes sense financially for most of these businesses.
Mm-hmm.
I have had requests from people who want to establish grow operations, um, but we just don't have a very large available industrial property base. Um, and, you know, we pass the ordinance in such a way that you can't grow next to homes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that eliminates a large portion, if not the entire portion of the downtown industrial section. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Also, safety compliance is, uh, can you explain just exactly what that is?
Safety compliance is basically a scientific lab, would be an office building. Um, you know, i- i- it's a place where the marijuana businesses would take a, a tiny sample, you know, and it would be tested for pesticides and THC content, all sorts of stuff. I think in the entire state of Michigan, you're probably not gonna see more than four or five of these labs. So, it, it's a bit of a pipe dream to say we can get one here. I think it's a perfect location. You got Muskegon, you've got Grand Rapids, you got, uh, Big Rapids, the whole area. We're central to that.
Mm-hmm.
There are quite a few marijuana stores in that area, but my understanding is right now, they're all going to Lansing, 'cause that's the closest safety compliance location.
They're very expensive to set up.
Yeah, the machines and stuff.
For specialty knowledge.
Yeah, and it's, it's basically a lab. I mean, it's, it's not really a, it's a, the people who work in it are lab people.
Yeah, they just, but currently, we have one grower out on White Creek and sixteen in industrial park. We have two stores on Main Street that have been Loom is open and, yeah, Mr. Maybe's has been approved, and his looks like it's gonna open fairly soon. The one on the Law Cabin Restaurant, we, who knows where that was going? And then the one at Pine Street and Fifth, or Pine and Main, the, the old Dairy Bar, that's flip-flop back and forth. And then we have one potential building going up in the old, uh, Wes Lewis property behind Wesco.
Sorry, Wes Lewis property?
Yes.
Behind the Wes.
Wes and Erle.
Like three things I don't even know.
Me either. Behind Wesco.
Behind Wes.
I got that. You know, by the big oak tree.
Oh.
Like, I could give a rundown of my knowledge.
That would be good.
Yeah, that, thanks.
So, we have a grower at sixteen.
Yep.
White Creek, uh, they're moving quite along. Uh, we have Loom, which is open. We have the Maybe property, which was just approved, but the building is substantially complete, so they only require state approval, which will take three to four weeks.
Is that in the Cedar Cafe?
That is the old framing shop.
Framing.
Okay. Pencil.
Okay, gotcha.
Cedar Cafe, um, they did a minor site plan change to move their bathroom. Um, and had another issue that they're working on. But he's kinda like an independent guy. He doesn't have a lot of support. He's the one who's physically out there doing it himself.
Yeah.
Bless him.
So, that's why he's moving so slow.
Yeah, I could tell.
Uh, the preferred landscaping location, uh, that was given final approval. And then the next day, they told me that they wanted to sell out to a different marijuana business. So, under our rules, that has to go back to the planning commission for special use approval again.
Oh, boy.
Good.
I've got the black grow business, which is supposed to go behind the Wesco. I spoke with him today. He indicated they've got some drain pond issues because of high water table.
The one at the fireworks store that was and then wasn't?
Fireworks store is long gone.
Yeah.
Um, so, in the HC district, we currently have uh, the Lowell store called Med's Cafe. Med's Cafe is gonna go next to where the Big Me Coffee is.
And that is a, just a retail?
That would be a retailer processor, 'cause in the HC district, you have to co-locate.
That's right.
Um, then you have, uh, Lake Life Farms. They just got prelim approval. Uh, they will be grow, they will be retailer processor. They're gonna be in the strip mall with the subway. And we have one open license under the current moratorium in the HC district. I've got about three different parties who are all asking about that one.
Okay, so when we're, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, when we're looking like putting how many license, caps on licenses, are we gonna do it? Retail so many licenses?
Um, you certainly can. You can, you can change it however you want.
Okay, so we could have different licenses for different things. How, caps on those?
Yeah.
How many businesses you want up and down Main Street? How many do you want out on the seventeen quarter?
And then how many?
So, we could go by.
Industrial's not so bad. You don't see them.
So, we could go by zones also.
That's what we have, highway commercial and, and HC.
Or we could go by types.
Downtown, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we put the types in the zones.
Right.
So, it kind of faults, so it already sort of falls that way.
It's already broken up that way.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, I remember that now. And the other co-locate locator would be a, a grower and a retailer?
Correct.
Could they have all three?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what I, that's what I thought it was at first.
But they.
HC.
They must have a retail, correct?
Right.
In the HC.
They must have a retailer, and they must have either a grower or a processor.
Mandatory is a business storefront. That's.
That's the only mandatory.
Yeah.
And then you need something else.
Either or.
Okay.
So, you okay?
Question?
Um, I was just wondering about the, are we gonna consider tonight the, um, um, the, uh, event organizers or temporary events? Are we just gonna go right to the, the, um, sales and production?
Well, so, I, I don't know if you guys wanna get that deep into the actual license numbers and all that stuff. My, I would like to make a recommendation in a draft form. Might have it ready for your meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay.
But I doubt it.
Alright.
I think August would be more than sufficient.
Yeah. Could you give us?
Yes.
Um, since we're discussing it, could you give us an idea of what your recommendation is?
Well, I think he will when he, after he hears from us.
Yeah, I, I, I did make one recommendation already. Um, and that, that's what makes sense to me, but of course, I'm looking for feedback here. Um, but to Rose's point, uh, I felt, just based on my knowledge of all of you, uh, that we weren't quite ready to proceed forward with event organizers or temporary events or consumption facilities. So, Rose, uh, Ms. Powell, if you'd, if you'd like to convince us.
Uh, no, I just was wondering if this was gonna be part of it, what we were gonna take care of tonight. But I certainly would like to get other things taken care of first.
I'd like to make a point if I can. I did read a recommendation that the city manager put out. I'd have no problem, as the mayor says, putting a cap on it uh, as soon as possible. Uh, I do wanna see a change in the idea of the growers being an unlimited number of licenses as it's indicated that we have right now. I think there needs to be set a minimum and a minimum of, uh, the excess growers was also listed as unlimited.
Mr. Gross, I'm sorry, you say minimum or max?
Well, a maximum of, a, alright, and a very low, okay.
So, if I could respond just briefly, so the reason I made that recommendation is similar to the reason, uh, regarding the safety compliance facilities.
Sure.
There's very, very, very small number of places, but these places.
But if we don't have it documented.
They will.
They're gonna try, and they're gonna start eating up time, wanting to know your time and stuff, why they can't do it if it's in print.
Yeah.
Then they have nothing to go back on, because it was determined by this board
that it wouldn't.
That this is what's gonna be.
And right now, it's, a lot of his time is getting ate up by the applications that we have now. I mean, it's like, the, the planning commission, to be honest, is getting tired of hearing about marijuana businesses. I think the council is too. You know, it's like, there's other businesses that need to come to town. We need to focus on and not these marijuana businesses. Unfortunately.
Or five and six of yours in the middle. I'd like to, a small maximum on them, that dealt with the growers, the excess grower, or, yeah, the growers, the excess growers and the safety compliance. I agree, the safety appliances, appliance is probably slim and none. But if we say we can have one, and then it comes up the opportunity, then we can get it, the likelihood of us getting a half a dozen of them, probably not, so. But we haven't totally excluded it.
So, I'll probably have to talk to the city attorney about this, but.
I think, yeah.
Well, and, and I will, but a specific issue I'm gonna mention right now. The people who are starting to grow operation down there on sixteen Mile Road right now, I don't want to limit the number of licenses that they can hold at that one location. So, I don't know if there's a way for us to say unlimited number at one location, but we'll only allow X number of locations, something to that effect. Because, you know, once, once you're growing marijuana in one location, five licenses, ten licenses, I don't personally care. But, yeah, that's something I'd have to talk to the city attorney about. I'm not quite sure how we could do that if we did.
Well, I think.
I'm just voicing my opinion.
Yeah, I think we're jumping off track here a little bit on, on everything. We need to, uh, uh, give your opinion on where you think we should go, either cap them, increase them, or whatever, and then Mr. Omax can put that together and give us an idea of an ordinance or what we're gonna do, what we're looking at, 'cause I think a lot of it's confusing.
Ms. Ray, Ms. Nixon, did you guys have anything? 'Cause you, I know you haven't gotten.
We haven't.
Things are confusing, but we also, we're doing a discussion right now, so we do need to talk about some things to be able to make up our minds. So, you know, just because we have discussion does not mean it's a bad thing, and it's gonna go on a different way. It's, we do have to ask questions. And it is helpful if I ask a question of a certain person that that person answer, not five other people answer when we ask a question. That will help make this a little less long. Um, but also, so I got one quick question. When you said, you don't wanna make one place have more than, like, limit them to one certain license. So, that means that if they are grow, grow operation, then they would, if they wanna awesome become a retail operation, they'd have to get another license. They couldn't be under that, um, co-license to start with, and then if they wanna go to the retail, then they'd be able to, or, yeah, that's, that's part, that's why I asked.
That's not really possible under our ordinance.
Okay.
So, the only place, um, that retail is allowed is in the downtown district, in the HC district. You can't grow in the downtown.
Right.
Um, and you can grow in the HC, but you have to start with a retail license. So, uh, the only place that we're really talking about multiple grow operations would be in the industrial zone. You cannot have a retailer in the industrial.
Okay, so what other license, then they would have a processing license, maybe?
They have multiple grow licenses.
So, the grow licenses, yeah, thank, thank you. I think it's a hundred plants, five hundred plants, and like two thousand plants.
So. It's about how much.
So, you have, you have different life, licenses for different amounts.
Correct. Plus, you can have as many one hundreds, five hundreds, or two thousand licenses that you want.
Okay, great. Thank you, 'cause I was confused about that.
And each license, like, covers, it, it's really weird, 'cause there's really like five or six different types of licenses, but it, even in the growing, it covers
The number of plants.
This number of plants. So, if you wanted to be a massive operation that was gonna grow like, like the place we looked at in Muskegon, we'll have multiple grow licenses, even though they're one business. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Any other questions you have, Ms. Powell, you too, before we?
Excess grower, I have a question about that. An excess grower? What does that? What's the difference between a grower and an excess grower?
So an excess grower is again, safety compliance thing, it almost certainly would never happen here. Basically, my understanding is you'd have to have five, two thousand plant licenses. Then apply for an excess grower license. And the excess grower license is basically saying to Laura, I am the Walmart of marijuana. I can't possibly operate with just two thousand times five. I need even more than that. So we'd have to be looking at a ten thousand plant process before they could apply for the excess grow license.
The Omega grower.
So we could even get rid of that one and it wouldn't affect anything.
That's in there.
I've, I've seen those big buildings and they're huge. Maybe we oughta.
And that's where we, we've eliminated in the HC. They can only have, what do we have, a two thousand square foot building? Twenty thousand square foot building, which is approximately the size of the Sable. Yeah, the bigger ones would have to go in the industrial. And that's where everybody gets mixed up. We have the industrial area. We have HC, which is seventeen miles. And the B one tooth is downtown. And every one of them districts have different rules that apply on what they can do or grow or sell there.
Do you think there's ever a possibility that an excess grower would come out to our industrial? And put in a two thousand or five thousand dollar, five thousand plant.
I think Remus is gonna knock them out. Remus is getting to be a very huge. And then Lake County and Northern Noguago is starting to blow up, let's say. For large, large industrial type growers. Townships are a lot more friendlier to work with.
Well, the townships have thirty-six square miles.
Yeah, they have a lot.
Correct. And that's, you're, you're gonna see the big growers go to the townships and places where the rules are less. Plus, they can have bigger parcels and.
Where there's farms. I mean, where, you know, where there's acres.
So there's a possibility no excess grower would ever wanna come to our little.
Okay, Mr. Rose, you have any further?
Made my statements. One thing to add to it, I'd like to say our industrial park, the industrial. Create jobs, opportunities for residents and so forth. Doesn't take near as many people to process as would put jobs into a factory.
Correct. There's no chance of allowing marijuana in the West Street project.
Right, because of the grant we're getting.
The grant is funded by the federal government. Federal government says no marijuana or.
There's other properties that could fall into that and have attempted to already.
Right. Let's call it me, you're next. No comment, okay.
He loves to come back to me.
Cap it where it is and be done with this.
I agree.
Just leave it where it is.
I agree.
The market forces will thin out anything that needs to be thinned out. And at that point, if someone else wants to come in, we've got a hard cap.
Okay, but it expires.
Yes, let's make this cap permanent.
That's, that's, okay. We have that now. You have your information you need, Mr. Womack?
Do I get to say?
I guess the only question I have then is whether we want to limit grow operations.
Is that, what I would say is I would like to see a cap on everything but grow operations.
We simply don't have the acreage for grow operations to become a problem.
If people in the extended that want to, let's say they want a four twenty-five. Into us for water and fire protection, why can't we?
We don't have, well, yeah.
Okay, let's say that there's a chunk going out past the Christmas tree farm. That wants to four twenty-five. And decides that they wanna put a big grow operation out there. I don't care.
So not to complicate the matter, but just based on the politics of the four twenty-five agreements that we do have, that's a virtual impossibility.
Okay, you think so?
But at this point in time.
This point, having said that even, we can change this to include any other or large grower, so.
We could come back, obviously, and change it just like we're changing it now.
My thing is, I don't care if industrial growers wanna be on someplace where there's acreage. Go put up a giant pole barn and grow marijuana. I don't care.
And we, we're, we're responsible for the zoning, so if we don't zone it industrial, then. It's over.
So we have any other further discussion you need to talk to Mr. Womack about this or, or what's the will of the council? Let's put it that way.
Cap it exactly how we have the moratorium now. That's, that way, no one is in mid-process of anything. If at this point you didn't know. I, I don't know how to help you.
Okay, now, the question I would have is that a form of a motion, but we need to, do we need to put a date on it of expiration?
Well, I, I think what I would do is if we get to August eleven.
Believe it's twelve.
So if we get to that point, I'll simply write a extension in the moratorium until we can pass it.
Okay, as long as, if that's everybody's agreeing to that, or I just want council wanna do that.
Renee, did you have something?
I would cap it.
You know, theoretically, you could right now make a motion to extend the moratorium.
That's where I'm at. What's?
Would that, would that be helpful?
It would. Technically, it's a discussion item.
We can act on anything.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a motion?
That's the will of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to extend the moratorium on marijuana licenses and businesses within the city of Cedar Springs. To September first.
I would second that to.
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
September ninth.
So until September tenth.
Of twenty twenty-one.
Yes, twenty twenty-one. Gives him a couple months.
Gives him a couple months.
I don't know, anybody who made poor judgments and started a marijuana license.
It gives, it gives the city manager a couple of months to get the language together on the ordinance.
I think the idea being that I would bring a first draft to you at your August meeting and a second or passage at your September ninth.
Ordinance is required to read.
Okay, it's been moved in second to extend the moratorium to September ten of twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Hall, can you clarify who seconded that motion? I did.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Atchison. Mrs. Conley. Mr. Gross. Mrs. Nixon. Mrs. Powell. Mrs. Race. Mr. Hall votes yes, motion carries. Moving down to B in discussion item. Armstonman, chapter five, article three of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Cedar Springs. Entitled Medical Marijuana First Read.
So there's currently three marijuana laws here in the state of Michigan. City has dealt with the twenty sixteen law. We've dealt with multiple times now the twenty eighteen law. We have never dealt with the two thousand eight law. So I'm proposing that we deal with that law at this time. We see draft ordinance. It's fairly liberal. As we discussed last time, there was a twenty twenty court decision, which is very much so guiding what we can and can't do. Um, so this, in my opinion, would match up with what the court opinion says. The city attorney is already reviewing this. We should have. A final copy for each next meeting, but I think everything that's in there is pretty reasonable.
Would this be considered the first read?
If you'd like it to be.
Clarification. Will the council consider this as first read? Or do we wanna wait till the August meeting and first read with? The final draft from our city attorney.
We're pretty close on this one, aren't we? Here, see any big changes?
Oh, the, the draft that you see now actually came from a different community that already had this law on the books. I added a couple minor things to it. And so it's not very different from the law that already exists in the other community. So it should be in a somewhat final form.
I would consider this a first reading then. If we're not looking, making.
Everybody in agreeance, this, okay. We need a motion to consider this as first read or just the way it is. I see the clerk ticking her head. Okay, moving on then. Any further discussion on B?
On the. On the applications or the medical marijuana. Comes in play on this, right? So any application that comes in for that has to be controlled as such. And the minimum number of people can be of knowledge of that.
I'm not entirely sure that's correct.
Nixon will know.
HIPAA applies to health insurance companies, doctors, nurses, medical professionals, and anyone who has. Personally identifiable health information about you. HIPAA does not apply to government entities. Now, Mr. Womack could ask me any medical question he wanted, and it's my right to not tell him. However. If, for instance, let's just play in the world to pretend, I was required to have a flu shot to come in to city hall. And I declined to tell him whether or not I had a flu shot. That is my right to do so. However, it is also his right to deny me entry to the building. So. The short answer is no. HIPAA has no bearing on this. If someone decides to not disclose information, which is their right.
For medical marijuana.
Then they also have to deal with the consequences of their choice, which is. They may not be granted whatever the city could grant them. Does that make sense?
Doesn't it doesn't, because when I went through this process with another, another government entity. One of the things that was required was that the records had to be blocked. And it was controlled by one person, the zoning administrator. Or the representative of the zoning administrator. It was not something that could be discussed. It wasn't disclosed with others. Because there are people with medical conditions that are going there and it's the same as dealing with the types of medications they might be taking. Now, this is, this has been a while back, so it may have changed. And I just don't disagree with you.
So that being said.
That being the case.
I probably would. Keep those records separate and under lock and key. Um, but the issue for us is not gonna be HIPAA, it's gonna be FOIA. So I would also like to, to the greatest extent possible, shield any information we have about any medical patient from marijuana in the city. Uh, to exclude that from any FOIA requests. So that's one of the reasons we're talking.
And that's, and that's not, you're gonna have a list of everybody that they're dealing with anyway.
And he should identify any issues. And then if you should ask him any questions, if that mandated or.
So I won't actually have, at least we shouldn't have any information about the patients. Right, your information we would have is where and who is growing marijuana.
The other one was under M. Uh, I'd like to see an N, gives you the right to inspect. The facility to make sure that they are abiding by the mandates of the ordinance.
I don't think you can.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
The building can be.
And this isn't a medical issue, it's a zoning issue.
That's the zoning issue.
If I wanna grow a medical marijuana plant in my basement.
That's personal.
That's for you.
Don't have a right to come look at my basement and determine if.
Unless you're growing it for somebody else.
Exactly. This is a business.
If it's individual growers for your own consumption and use, then no. But if it's a business. They have to comply with our ordinance because of ADA and all the above.
If you're growing for your personal use, you don't have to meet all the standards in this ordinance. This is for the medical care or medical marijuana provider. And yes, you can, you can inspect it. You can send in, uh, they have to have electrical permit for all of the extra lighting and so forth. And they have to have all this approved for what they put in there. It's just, I, it has to abide by the codes.
The big thing is the ADA bathroom. ADA compliance would be.
I don't think I have ADA compliance in this ordinance.
Not in this one, but I mean, just, it could be assholes, but.
It would be under his general business operation.
The, the only thing that I have in here that would really require any kind of inspection would be odor control. Which, of course, they would have to disclose how they were completing odor control.
And disposal.
You also have a decade as to how many plants it could be growing.
That's also under Michigan law.
But that's, but it's gonna know when to check it. If you have the right and if you've been told. I mean, you could pass it on, but I'm just saying, if you have the right to inspect the property, to make sure it's in compliance with the ordinance.
I have no problem adding that.
That way it's in there and they know it.
That's reasonable.
Mr. Sluggett would also know whether it's right or wrong. Okay, any other further questions on what we need to do for our first reading? Considered as. Okay, moving on to C, red flannel day, community event application. We're getting close to the hour of who's gonna buy lunch.
Also, I'll just start off real quick. And I'll indicate that, uh, this is, in my opinion, a much better application than what we saw last month. Last month, last time. Um, so this is probably an approvable form at this point. Um, I'm not sure if I ever received word back from the fire chief regarding his thoughts on it. Uh, but you will see in there a couple of cost estimates from Sergeant Probst. Regarding the Kent County Sheriff's Department. And, uh, this is largely similar to what occurred in twenty nineteen. It's been that long since we had this festival before COVID. So, uh, we do have two members, it looks like, of the board. If you guys would like to hear from them on Zoom. Uh, Ms. Diamond, uh, Mr. Andres, do you guys have any thoughts, questions, comments, concerns you'd like to share?
Uh, no, I don't. Um, do you have any questions for us? I think, you know, we're pretty well set. Um, the only thing we're really not having this year is the lumberjack show. Um, but other than that, it sounds like, uh, you know, everything's a go and we're moving forward.
Ms. Diamond, are you planning on having the craft show over at the school?
Yes, we are.
I know that's always a big thing. Uh, and the proposed beer tent, that would be, uh, in the heart of Cedar Springs, correct?
That's correct. The only other thing that we had a question on when we were, uh, looking where we're gonna have the grand lodge. Um, the cement pad that's down there currently. Um, we were gonna use that as part of the dance floor. However, it looks like it needs to have some. Dirt or something around the edges. There's a little bit of a stop.
Uh, I guess we'll have to take a look at it, make sure it's safe.
Okay, that was our only concern on that. Do you have any questions for us?
Council members, do you have any questions of the president?
It, is there a theme yet? Do we know?
That's right here.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Bringing back red flannel twenty-one.
How wonderful.
Great. Okay, any questions?
Just one comment, and it's petty. Uh, on your letter to the, from the red flower festival to the board, says list of services required for twenty twenty-one. You might have put requested. We aren't necessarily required to provide anything, although we're willing. Uh, it was just a term, so.
Noted, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? We also have Matt Andrus, the treasurer, I believe.
Andres, are you the treasurer of the organization?
No, Matt is no longer treasurer. He is the second vice president.
Oh, great.
But if you have some financial questions between him and I, we can probably answer them.
Any questions? Hearing none from the Zoom people. Mr. Fraser, the fire chief has a question.
Yes, Professor, Mrs. Diamond. We would, I believe we talked in one of our meetings, uh, with the location of the new fire station. That, uh, we keep second, uh, open Elm and Cherry as much as possible. Um, I know it's been a challenge in the past. But in the case of an emergency, be it fire or medical, we will need to exit that building. And our two main exits are to the north on Elm and to the south on Cherry. Um, we can always go west or go around the block, but we, I know in the past you've had. Uh, the car show on Elm Street and completely shut that street down, uh, this year, however. We may have to share half and half.
Yeah, we had already planned on that, Marty, not having the car show all the way down there, that side to block your drive at all. We'll make sure your drives are completely open.
And Rotary Cooks are chicken there on Cherry Street, if we can keep them on the east half of Cherry, that'd be appreciated too.
Yep, that's our plan, yeah, we, we won't block you in at all.
Yeah. I believe that would be the only thing I have, and I apologize for not getting back with you or the city manager.
Great, any other questions?
Uh, Ms. Diamond, um, do you want to take a bet how long the parade will last this year?
Uh, I'd bet at least an hour. Depends on how many tractors we have.
Whether the car wash is open. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I'd just like to make a slight announcement that we are planning a Red Hawk reunion on Red Flannel Day. At the Grand Lodge. After the parade at approximately five o'clock till seven, so it's gonna be a great day for Red Flannel and for the Red Hawks.
Oh, that's a, a Red Flannel announcement, not a city council announcement.
Well.
I just want to make sure I wasn't going to be required to do something.
You're not alone, so you.
You're probably good. And just, I'm just really excited that we're having Red Flannel again.
Yes.
You can watch, Mike.
I was just confused, I, I wasn't quite sure if I was expected to get, uh, old Red Hawks together.
We'll manage that.
Oh, the will of the council, this is, uh, an event application, are we approving it or? What's your?
I think it's approvable in its current form if council feels comfortable with it.
We need a motion to do. Or how would you like that?
Uh, if council would like, you would make a motion to approve the, uh, Red Flannel Community Event Application as presented.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I would make a motion to. Approve the Red Flannel Day Community Event Application as permit, uh, as. Presented, thank you.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved in second to approve the Red Flannel Community Event Application, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Atchison.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Hall, vote yes, motion carries.
Rebecca wants something.
I just wanted to make note that you guys will still need to adopt a resolution to permit alcohol on city property, so we can bring that back at the next meeting.
August meeting now, I have that, thank you. Moving on then to D. Mr. Womack.
I'm now realizing that I misspelled the word article.
Does that not fit into the social district?
No, it's still city property.
So the social district resolution specifies that you allow alcohol on Wednesday.
Okay.
August.
Not the day, got it.
And there, the festival is not applying the liquor commission for that, so.
It's also serving offsite, so, but we've done it multiple times in the past, we'll just make sure.
I just didn't know, I was like, does the social district cover that?
Yeah, so this is a proposed ordinance, uh, that would give the city some authority, uh, in controlling soil erosion and sedimentation control. Uh, we discovered with the three homes that are being built on Pine Street that we didn't really have good, uh, legal authority to do some of this stuff. Now thankfully, they have been working with us, uh, and paying for the removal of that sedimentation. Uh, but I would like to have something on the books that would give us more authority. So the question I would have for council though, uh, which we could put together for the next meeting. Is do we want to, uh, acquire a security deposit and or escrow? Or certain projects that we think might create this type of erosion and sediment, sedimentation control? And if so, do we have a dollar amount in mind?
On this one here, you know, I've seen it over many years, it, it, it all comes down to the operator. That is doing the site work.
Sure.
And some are very good, some are not. So. If we require them to put an escrow account in, it's always refundable. If. We don't have to use it to clean up their road mess. Now, in some communities and some places, they're requiring the contractor to put like a mat down. Excuse me, and what that does, it allows the dirt and mud to fall off the tires and not be tracked on. The roadway.
Yeah, and so that, that's something that we would be allowed to do under this ordinance is require, it's called, I think, riprap.
Yeah, it's, they have a fancy name for it. They can rent that or own it.
And then black plastic fencing that you see along property lines sometimes.
And sediment erosion, they're supposed to have that up anyway.
Uh, so not on all projects, that's the issue, is ninety percent of projects have that, uh, under different standards.
The county is required.
Under these specific houses, we didn't have that requirement, so this would just give us the authority to do it under our own ordinances.
I think we need to have this, uh, it's a tool that we can use. And it would be at the manager or the DPW director's discretion on whether it's implemented. Thousand dollars doesn't seem to be too out of line for some of these contractors, but then it would dictate the size of the project, I think the amount of the escrow.
Um, so the thousand that I've recommended is based on double the street sweeping cost.
Correct.
So my understanding from, uh, Mr. LaRose is that the street sweeping cost is about five hundred bucks per pass. So we would like to have enough on hand to do twice, or more likely do it once, and then say, give us five hundred more dollars, uh, to re-up your escrow amount.
Oh. I think what the will of the council.
This is not my wheelhouse, so I need to ask the question.
Sure.
So this is, if I understand correctly. While they are building and disturbing the dirt, dirt goes in the street, this is not dirt washed out of an existing lawn. It's just they were doing work, it went in the road.
From a construction site.
Okay.
Uh, I think you could apply it to an existing house, so we've, we had this once before where somebody had redirected their sump pump. Into the front yard. Um, and it was washing dirt and grime and, and water, uh, into the road. And we forced them to redirect the pipe, because under our laws, you can't, um. Uh, you, you can't, uh, put your drainage water offsite, you have to restore it on site. Um, but I can foresee a situation where somebody, you know, has a, a dirt driveway. And they're constantly putting dirt out into the road that we could. Find a way to use this to require them to ameliorate that situation. Now, we don't, we try not to, you know, the policy of the city is to, uh, figure out any other possible way to, uh, ameliorate a situation. Uh, before we have to do something like this. Um, but i- it's possible, I'd have to reread the ordinance to see if it could be used. Uh, but that's not a bad thing in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that a concern of yours?
No, I just, um. This is just not what I do, so I needed.
That's, that's fine.
I do people, not, not houses.
Right.
So, I, I'm reading, it, it's a very short ordinance, um, so the ordinance says shall not cause dirt, gravel, clay, et cetera. To be deposited left spilled into the road or sidewalk. So it doesn't say it has to be part of construction. Um, or intentionally dump, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So while that's almost certainly how it would happen. Uh, there's a possibility that somebody could do it in a different way, in which we could then use this ordinance.
It's another tool for them to basically have someone clean up the mess.
Okay.
One of the mounts. Whether we use it, that's up to the discretion of the manager or the DPW director. But I think it's a good thing to have. In that. Any other questions? Anybody? You need to hear otherwise. I think we're all in agreeance, Mr. Womack.
So I will bring that back to you and hopefully with a resolution to modify the, uh, fee schedule.
Thank you. Moving on then to item E.
So for fear of going well past everybody's estimate of time. Um, the only thing I'm looking for today. Is an opinion. Start working on a request for proposal. So. I, I was wrongly in the camp of, I think we can save the concrete and use it for some other purpose. But after discussions with a number of people, uh, I don't think it's possible to save the concrete. Uh, that exists underneath the old fire station. If that's the case, and the concrete has to be removed eventually anyways. Uh, I think that kind of deflates the idea of keeping that as a park or a splash pad or whatever else. Uh, so ultimately, I think it's probably going to end up as parking. Um, and that's fine, I have no objections to that, but for today's purposes. I just want to know that this is something we want to move forward on. I think we could probably get that building removed either for zero cost. Minimal cost, or we might end up actually being paid to do so. So is council ready for me to at least put together some paperwork to get that process started?
Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Powell, what's your opinion?
Um, I think it needs to go, and I was also wondering, is there still a hundred and thirty?
We'd have to come to ask Mr., uh, maybe if that's still a go.
Available.
It, it was stated. It was. I was told that it was, but if it's on paper.
Yeah.
And, and I will follow up on that, and I'm sure Mr. Womack will too.
So, w- we, we will have to find out, because my understanding is a significant portion, if not all of that hundred and thirty. Was used for preliminary planning for the new fire station building.
Yeah, that number sounds awfully familiar.
Yeah.
Well. After the new fire station was built, we had a co- I had a conversation with Mr. Maybe, Tom. And he said he would pay to have it torn down, so. I would, we will get in touch with him to make sure that that is still his intent. If it's still there, if it's not, then that's, that's another issue we had to deal with.
He spoke with us a couple of weeks ago about the idea of paying to move it.
Yes, that would be up to him.
Right, I'm not saying it's not, but I mean.
Yeah.
What he told me, if I understand him correctly, is that the community building development team would pay to move it.
Yep.
To be used for city storage and then, like.
There's a lot of things going on.
West Street or some other place.
We would still have to budget for the parking lot aspect of it.
Of course.
When we get to that.
Well, this here would say if we, the council decides it all needs to go, then we would need to be looking down the road. It may cost us, or it may not, but be prepared either way.
The question that you're asking right now is, just to clarify. Do we want that building to go?
I vote for that.
I agree.
Let's call it, yeah, you agree, Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Next.
Yes, the building or the building in the concrete?
Right now, we will deal with the building.
The building itself.
Roll it on, that will give him the direction of getting a price for either or.
I, I suspect the concrete will be forced to go.
Yep.
Because those metal poles, those steel poles are deep down into it.
Right.
To get them out without destroying the concrete.
You can just cut it off at the.
Well, that's, they would scrap it, the whole issue was, Mr. Gus has stated that if. The pilings are bolted to the concrete, it can be removed and moved and relocated. If it's not, then it becomes very cost effective, ineffective to move it. It can be, but that would be the responsibility of whomever wants that building. Their problem, ours would be that you would be required to move it.
And I would just point out, um, so Ms. Conley's not under misinformation, I don't think this building could be saved for municipal purposes.
Okay.
Um, there's a number of codes that we would have to meet, that this building cannot meet.
Okay.
So unless we invest a significant amount of money.
I, that's fine with me, I'm just saying that was the conversation that he had with me.
So a preview of maybe next week is that the hope right now is if we were to sell West Street property for profit. That we might then be able to turn and use some of that profit for the creation of a DPW garage.
I have another, I have another to talk to you about, a whole nother issue, but it's, the way it stands is that the request, the manager to proceed. With a.
So you don't have to actually approve of what I put together, but I do want to at least start working on it.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
I have one more question, and then.
Yeah.
So we need this storage. And we have a standing building. Could we not use it as it is where it is for storage?
Oh, we already are. Uh, we do have our snowplows currently in that building.
Okay.
But my understanding from lots of discussion I've heard over the last month or two. Uh, is that the, the community, uh, wanted that building gone for aesthetic purposes.
Okay.
So my hope would be that we could get through this winter with the building in place. No storage. And then have it removed in the spring.
We're getting too close to have it developed, but yeah, that's a good.
I would be in favor of hearing a proposal about it going. Because I understand the community wants that also.
There was also some parking, when they passed the, um, plans for the library.
That was supposed to be parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
However, based on the clerk's work, I've never found anything that said that the council agreed.
It was all discussionary type stuff, but, okay.
But that's the construct, is that it needed to be part of the park space.
Whether the building has to go first before we can decide what to do.
Of course.
We're worried.
The board agreed or not, there is a need.
Yes.
More parking in there.
I don't know if I'll agree with that either.
And we could advocate it should be something else, but the construct when the library was built, this was that that building would not longer be there.
Yes. All right, uh, moving on then to F, Mr. Womack.
Uh, so this will be at the new fire station, uh, July fifteenth at six P M. Um, the person that we, uh, worked with, hired to do a strategic planning session, I understand it will be the new Kent County Administrator here shortly. So I don't know if that's going to interfere with his ability, uh, just from a time constraint. Uh, point of view, uh, be able to come out and do that. I did, um, email him today, ask him for clarification, make sure he'd be there. Uh, I can do a strategic planning session just with you guys, but. You know, my time is limited, it, it would be complicated for me to do. Uh, so I guess the only question that I have is I'd like to have this catered. Um, I've been talking to various restaurants, looking at the options, I've sought, uh, settled on no-nos.
Ooh, yes.
I guess my question is, is pizza, cheese bread, salads, is that sufficient and acceptable for the board? And do I have any, uh, dietary issues I need to work around?
Seafood, I see whatever I eat.
I'm also on the seafood diet.
I'm good with pizza and any of that, especially no-nos, it's very good, very good out there. We did a lot of that, so. No complaints?
Nope.
No-nos it is.
So all anchovies pizzas, what I heard?
That's correct.
I don't eat red meat.
I'll bring mine.
So, but other than that.
Generally would be cheese pizzas and, yeah.
All right. One aside, no meat.
I eat meat.
Okay, move with any other, then we'll all be there, correct, and we also have the candidates. Or the council seats.
Uh, they will be invited, yes.
Thank you. I will be here, so, anyway, moving on. Communications.
Uh, so the MML convention this year is downtown Grand Rapids.
Oh.
Yes, it's good, because it means it's a short drive for you, it's bad, because with the city will not pay for your hotel.
Oh, that's good. So I would encourage everyone that can go, go, it's a great, great learning experience.
Good data on that.
Yeah, it's on here, um, the twenty-second to the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Of August?
September.
September.
September, September, twenty-two to twenty-four. And if you are encouraged to go, you would need. And if you are encouraged to go, you would need to contact, uh. Mrs. Johnson. To make reservations or, or the meetings you wish, and I think there'll be, there'll be more information coming out on what classes are available too.
They're, they're always fun classes.
They're very good classes.
But a lot of it is, uh, getting to meet other council people.
That's the biggest part, is meet and greet other folks, other communities, you know, and you'll find out, everybody has all the same problems, it's just different place. And how they problem solve.
We don't have any problems here, so.
We're the problem solver format for the whole North Kent County.
I love talking to the city managers cuz it makes me realize how small our problems are.
Yes, very much.
And how few we have comparatively, so.
Yeah, but it's, never mind.
You have such wonderful council.
That's it too.
No, you joke, but yes, I do. I'm very thankful and grateful for the council I have.
Very good one, and then, okay, the M M L, whoever can go, please go and let this Johnson know. And then the twenty twenty-one public meeting notice.
Uh, we just put this together. Yep, so we're gonna maintain Zoom throughout the rest of the year. Uh, this has become very helpful for Planning Commission, but as you guys saw, we have. Uh, some red final folks with us here today as well, uh, it's just useful, and we want all the. Uh, Zoom information in one place, so we didn't have to keep, uh, I mean, we will, we'll obviously broadcast it, but. I have to keep coming up with them each, uh, month.
Yeah.
Yeah, the recurring Zoom links are nice.
Very much so. Any questions on item C? And D, second.
So the assessor kindly put this together for me. Um, these are the properties that will be created at, uh, the West Street as part of the business park. Um, and, you know, the assessors think that if a city owns a piece of property and we're trying to develop it, that it should be taxed.
Yep.
So, uh, the goal is to sell all of these properties so that somebody else pays the tax. Uh, but I thought council should be made aware that there is a possibility. Uh, that we might end up paying some, uh, tax up to sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Now, a majority that would come back to the city, uh, but we would also be paying the county and some other things. But the goal is to sell that property before we have to pay taxes on it.
Let's make it a park.
So, again, you, you, you're a funny council, um. So there are two properties which I don't think really will be sellable. Uh, and the goal is to put the DPW garage on one of those properties. Um, I'm not quite sure what we're gonna do with the other property yet. So we'd like to obviously have it not be taxable. Um, or if we work with the assessor to make minimized tax, you know.
Make it a road right away for a future road east.
And that's actually the property that we're looking at, the north-south ro- road, you know, road right away. But I just.
East-west right away.
Council needs to know this, so.
All right, great. Moving on then to D, Second Amendment of the Cedar Springs, City of Cedar Springs Dispatch Agreement.
Yep, nothing added on this one.
No, just same old thing, and then. At this time, moving on to departmental reports, Mr. Womack.
So as I understand it, Bill is actually still currently, right now, out there working.
Of course he is.
He has had a very tough summer, uh, we are getting a ton of work done in this community, and Bill's on top of it all, so. We appreciate it, um, unfortunately, this DPW department is shorthanded. We had a very difficult time getting, uh, some help candidates, we're at least one full-timer short. Uh, and Bill sometimes looks like a chicken with his head cut off, so.
He's enjoying himself.
I'm sure he is, but.
Should we look at something about extending his vacation days because of, I mean. I know that we have this conversation periodically, but add in a pandemic and add in.
Uh, Bill's kinda like your city manager, he likes the work, he wants to get it all done, he has a strong sense of, you know, responsibility. It, it's more of a question of forcing him to take the vacation.
Oh, he's on the lake.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, that's awesome! Hooray, Mr., hooray Sergeant Probst.
All right, thanks for Bill, and then Mr., oh, moving on, we have Police Department, we might as well. You have any questions of?
Oh.
Sergeant Probst.
Yeah, finally got my green screen working.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, green screen, you forgot to shave too.
Yep.
Good job. Any questions of Mr. Sergeant Probst? Great job, thanks for the help on, uh, the dirt bike. Yeah, I heard that was a very, very good success.
Yeah, the gravel race?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that went really well.
They're really happy about it, and they plan on coming back next year.
Good.
Thank you for your help on that.
Awesome.
Promote the community. Any questions of Sergeant Probst? Hearing none, moving on to our fire chief.
I have nothing, you have my report, and I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability. Otherwise, I've got ice cream waiting.
Is it just sitting out cuz it's probably melted by then?
It might be.
You can still drink it.
Yeah, all right. Anybody getting lost in the fire station now?
Pardon me?
Everybody getting lost in the new fire station?
No, but we made a maneuver today that I would have never, ever thought possible in the old six.
Turn a truck around?
We moved a truck from here to here without going outside the building.
How long did it take? How many point turns?
I'm home, it's great.
Nice.
Ribbon cutting, it was great, it was great to see all the firemen there. Moving on to our city clerk.
I don't have much to report, um, we are full swing election mode, um, we've got some. Um, public accuracy testing coming up in the next few weeks, so anybody who would be interested in viewing the testing equipment and so forth, they're more than welcome to come. Um, I did find out this afternoon that I was appointed to the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Executive Board. Looking forward to that.
Congratulations!
Thank you. I don't have anything else. It is more work.
Rebecca, do you know of any attempts for any outside, uh, organizations to. Get a hold of our ballots and do these crazy audits and stuff? Is there any of that going on in Kent County?
Not that I've heard of, we don't have anything currently right now, there was some, um, action at the state level, but that has been, um.
Squashed.
Yeah.
Yay.
It actually requires a state approval to make that happen, right? Like, I, a person can't just come in and say, I wanna do this.
Well, they could FOIA some things, but.
Sure, but they couldn't say, I wanna come in and audit all of your stuff and look at all of it and.
They cannot audit the machine and the equipment and so forth, they have to.
I hope it stays that way, that's just the scariest thing I've ever heard. Take our sacred ballots and play with them, it's terrible.
Where that happened, the state legislature approved that.
Well, they're wrong.
Saying they're not.
We can't fix that, but anyway.
But it's, it's not a thing an outside person can just come in and do.
We gotta hold our ground on that.
Any, any further questions of the clerk at this time? Moving on then to the Finance Director, Mrs. Falcon. Oh, she's there in person.
I am here, yep, um, got the summer taxes printed and mailed out.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
So, those payments have already started to come in. And I'm shifting to, uh, wrapping up the end of the fiscal year and beginning the new fiscal year and all that good stuff, so. Um, our audit, annual audit will be the last week of audit, August. So we'll be ready.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions to Mrs. Falcon?
Um, Mr. Ray, if I may, is, is our tax revenue, um, continuing to increase? Coming back from the, the big dive that we took in property values?
Yes.
Good.
Great.
Taxable values increased this year by one point four percent.
Excellent.
Ms. Falcon, what was our final, uh, total revenue from last year? Was it two point three five million? Is that what I read? You know, off the top of your head?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
That's right.
That's fine.
Thank you for your hard work. Moving on to item, any questions to Mrs. Falcon, any further question? Moving on then to code enforcement. Mr. Womack, do you have anything to add?
We found somebody growing marijuana outdoors.
That was a matter of time. That was just a matter of time.
Like, in between tomato plants?
No.
This, we'll talk later.
Okay.
There was, I, I noticed one just the other day, there was plant setting right out in the front yard, so.
Oh, well then.
No matter. Then moving on to building inspections. Hearing, nothing there, uh, no board commission minutes. And we're at this point of the meeting this evening for council comment, Mrs. Poe.
The, uh, music in the heart has been just wonderful, really enjoyed it, it was a little scary last night with the lightning. And, um, I guess just, uh, being downtown more and seeing folks and, uh, enjoying the club starting up again is. All I can say is, it's just delightful to be back and to some kind of a normal. People and activities is, it's great. And thank you for all, all you all do, everyone, yeah, Marty too.
Thank you, it was great, Mrs. Exson.
Um, thank you to all the staff again, um. I have pictures of the, um. Grand opening for the fire, fire, um, department, um, if anybody needs them.
Have to preserve them.
Okay, and I've got video of a couple things, so you want me to send them to you, Mike? Okay, and I think that's it, that was a fun day.
Yes, it was, hot dogs were good. Thank you.
Good old Fred.
Good old Fred, Mrs. Conley.
Uh, the hooray on the fire station, that was so exciting. And I have to give a little props to our fire department, I have a friend who. Uh, works with adults who have, um, cognitive disabilities. And she has a client that is just enamored with our fire station. And she, he was at the ribbon cutting, and then she has brought him out several times more, and. I just keep hearing how amazing our fire department is. Um, with that outreach, and they've given him some patches and. You know, given him tours of the truck in the building, and I just really appreciate that. Reaching out to all of the citizens of all the, you know, people with disabilities and. That social engagement, and it's, yes, you save people's lives. But you also make these connections with people in the community that I think is just wonderful. And I don't know if you get enough props for that, so thank you to you and your folks for that, and please know that it came back to me. And I wanted to give you some public attaboys for it, cuz I think it's, it, it's. Near and dear to my heart that we, um, include all of our citizens. As part of our community in that capacity, and so I really appreciate that. And it's a beautiful station, I'm so excited it's there.
Gentlemen, I think it is, he wanted me to hire him that same day.
He did. He was very sad to learn we don't have any openings, I am told.
He was, he was doing the, uh. The hose, he was using the hose to do the, um, yeah, yeah, he was doing that, and then, but he also wanted. Um, you to, to, uh, he lost a pet, what was that, a bird?
His dog.
Oh, it's dog, he wanted the fire trucks to be in, go by for the funeral.
But he's, he's come back since.
Yeah, he's great.
Several times, so, and the person who works with him, um, is a, a long time. Her brother and I went to college together, and so this, you know, connection was, she just was like, I have to tell you how great your fire department is. So.
Thank you, and I'll bash that on.
Thank you.
It's huge that you do that.
It just shows what type of fire department we have.
Right?
Personnel.
It really is.
Mr. Gross.
Can't follow up on much more than thank everybody. Having been on the fire department and stuff. The members of the fire department get as much out of those visits. As the children that visit the fire department, is that not right, Chief Fraser? Uh, it's an enjoyable event for everybody. Uh, what you give is what you get in return, so, uh, and that's kinda the way they look at it as far as serving. It's not for the pay.
No.
Uh, self-gratification and what you do and, and how you do it, so, but, uh. I, I wanna thank this board also, uh, for being the way the board is. I've had a chance to witness some other things, other places, and, uh. Uh, we may disagree with each other at times and wanna set each other straight. But, uh, it's a good board to work with, so, uh. Some thanks here too, so, as well as all of the staff here at the city. Thanks much.
Mrs. Race.
I don't have a lot to say tonight, it's weird, right? Just thank everyone for all that they do for the city. It looks beautiful, and it's nice that we got some rain, so everything's green again, and, um, but. Not much else, just. Good to see everyone again.
Yes. Mrs. Nixon.
So I, um, it occurs to me as we're, we're talking about Bill still being out working. That this worker shortage is not new. This is at least the second year in a row, we've discussed this, I believe it's the third, but I couldn't swear to that, twenty-twenty was pretty long.
Like, twenty-six months.
It was really long, um, so I, I think that, uh, perhaps as a board, we need to start marinating on how we might. Attract some, some talent, because this has been an ongoing problem. Even when everyone wasn't getting the quote-unquote good unemployment. Um, so I, I'd like to see us think about that going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. You know, I, I've said this many times, you know, this is a great board, we have great boards, and we've moved. The city a long ways. In the future to the good, and there's no I and team, and I mean that, it's, it's, it's like, we all work together, agree, disagree. But in the end, we, we put together what is the best for our residents in this community. You know, and that's the key here, and, and I hope that it happens. In November after this election and I'm gone, I hope everyone continues to use that as. Our North Star, let's, let's keep moving this community forward, cuz we have to. In order to grow, we have to move forward, so. And it's a great community, I've been here all my life, and with that, is there any other business to be brought before this board, Mr. Womack?
None at this time.
Stand adjourned. Madam Clerk, could you record?
Two minutes away.
Who has to bring snacks?